Jim, so what would you like to do anything else tonight? I mean, what would you like to do tonight?
No, no, I was just, I just wanted to bring up, bring up an issue and, you know, the superintendent explained that there is no rental fee and that, you know, it would be, you know, a cost of reimbursed extra personnel.
Do you think, are you looking for a similar to the council suggesting that they send us the dates and so we start working on some times?
Yeah, I mean, I'll just give them a roundabout number and ask them if they were to choose to come here that we should, we would need the dates as soon as possible, you know, estimated dates, and that we couldn't guarantee any dates.
And we can give them an average cost if their meetings are three hours long or whatever.
Or at least that seven, yeah, they're about four hours.
Are they four hours?
Yeah. We could probably guarantee a place, but maybe at the high school.
Yeah, yeah. It was after 11:00 last night.
Yeah, so we can do all that, just really, they should get the ball rolling.
Okay, thank you. The first item on the new business is the 2017 bus routes used in consulting firms.
I put this on and I asked Sherry to print up some stuff and send it out to everybody. Really, you know, as I've said before, we're the only community in the state that's paying depot to depot in extra hours on the routes. And I really think it would be a better idea if instead of having the Daco personnel develop the routes, we use the services of a consulting firm. And this consulting firm is the one that Ben is currently using in his analysis of the, of the current routes. And when I was with Ben and Mike Pollak and the other attorney in Ben's office, when they were on the phone with this company talking about what they were going to be doing for Ben currently, and the man mentioned that, you know, a lot of the bull work that we're going to have to do for this project, once we have that input, it makes it easier for us to do route analysis down the road or any other type of route development. So I, hearing that, I talked to Mike and Ben and said, should we get him to give us some type of quote now before you sign a contract with him to have him do the consulting work so that he remembers he just said that to you, that, you know, we might get a better price? So anyway, we did, and they sent this form out to us, which I had Sherry include. This company does, has had contracts with Bristol Warren Regional, North Kingston School District, Central Falls School District, the Providence School District, Charahoe Regional School District, and the state of Rhode Island. They actually manage the fleet for all of the transportation for the state. So it's a very reputable firm and quite accomplished and great credentials. I, I did want to print out a couple of pages, but unfortunately the data email to Sherry the website was down and subsequently came up, and I forgot all about it. So I just read you basically the communities that you would have found on the website had you gone. And I think it's, I don't know, it's just like, you know, I used to go to New York all the time and, you know, we'd get in a cab, and if they thought you were on a towner and you'd give them an address, all of a sudden we'd be going west when you knew the destination was to the left, and it benefits them to, you know, take in a longer route in the cab. So I, I don't feel like, I feel like it's the, what's the fox guiding the hen house when you have them design the routes? It's not to their best interest to give us cheaper routes, it's our best interest to have shorter, more efficient routes. And I think we'd get a better result if we had a consultant look at it and do it. And they've been successful in the other communities that they've worked in. And for $5,700, I think the return on investment would probably be well worth it.
Is that addition to what they're doing now, or is that...
Yeah, this is for the, this is for a fee to design the routes for next year.
So they gave us a $6,000 price to do all the bull work, and now they're going to give us a $5,700 price to do consulting? I mean, it seems like, I owe $200 for bull work. Those prices seem a lot.
Well, they're doing the same, they're doing, they're doing the same thing this year with this year's routes that they're going to be doing for next year's routes.
Came up with $6,000 to do what they had to do, and he said he did a lot of the bull work upfront. So I would expect that when they're doing the routes for next year, it would be $1,000, $2,000, not $6,000, $6,000.
Thanks, Mr. Dale. I'll be brief. I, I just want to encourage the committee to be, I'm not sure how to say this, there's no fox in the hen house. Daco's done an admirable job. The routes that they started with were the routes that were agreed upon by Bob Mayo after we dropped kindergarten and increased, put kindergarten on, dropped 12th grade, put our registrations in. So please get that notion out of your head. It's not fit at Daco. They're extremely professional operations, so I'm not going to comment any more than that or in the contract. If that's what the committee decides to do, to go consulting firm, that's great. I have, that's your prerogative. My concern is time, because the districts already started to roll over students. We started in the beginning of June next year. So we've basically rolled over students, we've begun to input K, we've dropped grade 12, and Bob and Jane have already begun to eliminate the bus and revise the routes according to one less bus. We usually, again, we begin this in, in early June with the goal of having a draft of routes completed by well before August 1st, with the process starting now. Eight, one, they go to the police, we then publish for at least two weeks before school begins. That would be at 15. We then have an extraordinary amount of daycare bus stop requests along with new registrations for weeks before we open. It's inevitable, every year, the two weeks before we open, we get hit with a ton of registrations. So if you decide to move forward with an outside company developing your routes, which is your prerogative, just please ensure that the drafts are completed by eight, one, for review by the police. The company is going to be available by phone, or at least in person, to receive parental phone calls and questions or complaints, unless you've once published the week of eight, 15, because they're going to have to work them out. And available to add new registrations, as well as daycare requests, starts the first month of August, and available for the first week of school to manage any issues with stops, routines, times, and complaints. So I, I think it's a worthy undertaking if that's what you want to do, but your timing is pretty rough right now.
Well, he said, they said right in the letter that I distributed to everybody, it'll be necessary to have this information no later than June 30th, 2016. So we would have to get them the kindergarten registration information, the rollovers and such from, from the school staff. But I think Melissa must have that already downloaded.
Yeah, we do, we can give it to them. Once you pay this company that money, it's just that we're not going to do their work for them.
No, no.
So they have to do the work. You're, you're under a...
This is going to be bit. Are there any companies that we're not going to do this work?
I'm sorry?
Are there any companies that we're not going to do this work? All local companies?
I think Mike's done his research, he's found a number of companies in Rhode Island, hasn't he, Mike?
No, I didn't find any companies.
So I thought he made some phone calls to companies in Rhode Island.
No, I got, I got it down. I found this company by Googling it and asking for transportation, or contractors, transportation consultants with...
I thought you found Ocean State and some other consulting firms in Rhode Island that, that you had worked at. And that's what Bennett shared with me.
No, Ben had an Ocean State consulting, but I don't know that they have computerized routing system.
Oh.
They go in and write RFPs for districts and I think do an analysis of what you could do to make it better.
Actually, there are a number of that now.
But I don't know if they do this, but the, what, you know, they don't think they do what they, this company does. I wasn't aware that they did.
Okay.
I thought it was a, more of a mom and pop operation where they come in and look at, make, give you verbal recommendations and a written report about what you could do and cut down. I'm particularly nervous, though, because I think here too, that Mr. Mayo wanted to reduce a bus. And I'm thinking, okay, we're paying, you know, $40,000 in extra hour fees, that's like, I'm root of my opinion, and you can say Daco's done a wonderful job. I'm not saying they've done a wonderful job, I'm saying that I'm very unhappy that we're paying extra hour fees for being the only district in the state to pay such a fee. And I think if we had used a company such as this in the first place, we'd be paying zip. Because I still have my own opinion of the accuracy of the, or the route development systems that we use. But I think Mr., you know, Mr. Mayo did mention reducing a bus, and I'm thinking, okay, wait a minute, we're paying $40,000 in extra hours, now we're going to reduce a bus? And, and did we weigh out the benefits of that versus the cost of adding, you know, reducing a bus and, or saving that money or the extra hour fees? Because if we're already paying extra hours...
So that's exactly what they're doing.
With 14 buses?
That's exactly what they're doing.
Well, I haven't seen any analysis before they jump to, let's get another bus.
We have a tremendous amount of analysis that...
What did you do on this?
So, Pollak, you know, you have a right to your editorial comments, for me, I just 100% completely disagree with you on all your editorial comments. That being said, I, I have faith in Bob and Jane, and they are looking at and already developed routes with their electronic routing system. By eliminating a particular bus, they've adjusted the other buses, they're going to do dry runs, they're going to get all that analysis. We have the numbers with regard to ridership length of time, and we did recognize a bus that really is, has low ridership, and we have tangential routes. So they've done some great work already. So I can tell them to stop if that's what you want, just that the hour's late, it's June 30th.
Well, you know, if there is such, if there is a gung ho interest in trying to economize, I don't understand the...
Do you want to debate this now?
Water, water. This is a discussion, this is an item on the agenda, we're also about to discuss it. To discuss it, Mike, you're monopolizing the conversation. We have, we all have a right to speak on this, you're not letting anyone else speak on it. Madam Shear, can someone else speak on this? I'm asking for a ruling, are you on this?
Sure. Mr. Lombardi has been waiting to speak, and then I'll, if you want to speak, Billy, please.
I do, good afternoon.
Just a couple, just a couple of questions. So if we had, if we, if we had a flat fee agreement with Daco, would we need this?
No, we don't have a flat fee agreement with American.
Right, but that was my, I've been asking for that for a long time, to resolve the dispute and come in with a flat fee agreement so that we didn't have this problem in the future. So that's, then I would probably not support this because of that, but let me answer just a couple of things. So how are we getting around the $5,700, not the additional fees?
I don't think I, well, you would solicit it, but by charter, I don't think we have to bid for professional services.
I believe on the state law you do.
So when we use the special ed consulting firms, I'm ranking in $120,000, I think we're going to be up to this year for one firm, did we go out to bid on that? That was...
I know we went out to bid for the engineer on your firewall.
No, no, I'm talking about consulting services.
Yeah, I can tell you, I don't know.
I don't, I don't recall ever seeing us go out to bid for anything like that, and that's a $120,000 job. And I did think that this was professional services, and I, maybe on the PDIC you came across that with the architect and the other...
Architect isn't a separate...
Well, it's a professional service.
Even state law allows architects not to be, architects and engineers are something. Yeah, we didn't deal with it directly because the town council hired, so hired that.
But I'm just bringing that up, Mike. Think differently.
No, well, I'd be willing to make it subject to Ben's verifying that we didn't need, that we had the right to, well, to go with professional services.
Okay. The only, well, the only thing is, I, you know, again, I just disagree that we're, you know, I think, let me, let me say this, I think you found a lot of issues with Daco, I agree with a lot of the stuff. I, what I don't agree with now is letting this linger on and not coming in for a final agreement. And now we're spending additional money that I don't know if we have to spend enough. That's why I'm in disagreement. But, and I just want to make a comment, that I, I mean, I would absolutely believe that Mr. Mayo went through a cost analysis before he removed the bus. I don't know how he wouldn't do that. I would have, I have confidence that he would do something like that.
Mr. Mayo is a part-time employee, he gets a $3,000 stipend, and I don't think you can expect an inordinate amount of work that's equivalent to something like this would provide us with for $3,000. I think basically that's compensation you give him for taking parent complaints and handling disputes.
I agree with you. What I'm saying is, I don't know if this is necessary for a flat fee, that's what I mean. If we were to get an agreement with Daco, then, you know, I mean, I've been voting against it consistently, moving this on and on, I'm just stating that I, I would have to be consistent to say I wouldn't support this. Now, if you say, well, no, there's different reasons for doing this, you know, that we want to do something differently, then, then I would consider supporting it. But not for figuring out how we can reduce the contract and we can reduce it in other ways, is my opinion.
Madam Shear, I wouldn't support it. Well, there's no motion before, so I want to, I want to be jarring, but it seems to me that, first of all, Daco, or whoever we're working with, is, we should first try to work, as we've been doing, working with our provider. From what I can see in the paperwork, I think Daco is inclined to work with us on this issue. And I think, again, I'll leave that, I'm going to say it now, I think they've been trying to work with us in every contract, and I've been with them 23-plus years, in almost every contract there's issues, and you resolve them, you work them out, and sometimes you can't, sometimes there's a clear breach, but sometimes there's misunderstanding, and you work them out, you don't turn, every, every little dispute is not litigation that. Secondly, my kids have been riding the bus, has anyone else's kid ridden the bus? My kids have been riding the bus for quite a few years and still do. No one? Okay. And, I mean, they have, we've seen, and I'm not espousing the prior service, but I think the current service seems to be very, the kids just generally say they have the bus time on the buses. I remember the kids being on the buses for much longer periods five years ago, and they've got configurations change, routes change, it's kind of standard. But I, and I have a lot of kids in my neighborhood I talk to, too. They seem a lot happier if the bus was in terms of the mods higher than the bus wiped down. Finally, I do believe, especially if there's people who can do this locally, apparently we don't know if there are people who can do this locally enough, it would have, if I'm going to support so all, and I'm not, and this is important, consulting firm, from what I'm hearing, I think it should certainly go out to bid.
Any other discussion? Any motion to be made?
I'm going to make the motion, just, I, I'm going to make the motion that we, pending Mr., Scanzio, thank you, pending Mr. Scanzio's opinion that the, the charter allows us to go out to bid for professional services and the bus consulting firms and professional services. If he rules in that, then I take the motion that we negotiate a contract through his office, have him negotiate a contract with Daco for the development of routes for next year's busing.
And Mike, to clarify, that's not, not the one doing this, not the consultant that is doing this now, not the one that's doing now, that's just something more forward.
This is for next year's routes, development of routes over the summer. Great. No, that, no.
You said Daco.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, no. My motion is that if Mr. Scanzio rules that the charter does not require competitive bidding for professional services, then we move forward and have Mr. Scanzio draw up a contract with school bus consultants to develop the bus routes for next year, and that we begin immediately on that to try to meet the June 30th deadline.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
So if you have Mr. Scanzio doing the additional work so that it's going to actually be an additional cost, so it'd be $5,700 plus Mr. Scanzio's time?
Well, he's just going to write up a contract for us.
You got bills.
You got, but I mean, you have to have a contract, and I don't want to sign a contract with Daco.
Okay, is that further discussion?
No.
Could you please do a world call vote?
Sure. Mr. Bassett?
Yes.
Mr. Clifford?
Yes.
Mr. Conell?
No.
Mr. Lombardi?
No.
Mr. Raymond?
No.
Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Read brief, so...
Thank you. The next item on the agenda, measures to consider to bring down the cost of busing in the future, Mr. Clifford?
By the way, before I reread our packet, there's a separate item that I had included in here as an item on the agenda, it isn't the same item. And Sherry included the article that was in the Valley Breeze, where Cumberland representatives were submitting legislation. They, basically, in a nutshell, they have been developing their bus routes based on 100%, you know, participation in the routes, and one of the, they asked one of the reps to submit a bill of relinquishing them from having to account for every single student like they were all going to take the bus to school when half the high school drives themselves to school. And in the article, you can see Elliot, I always mispronounce his name, Kruger, is it Kruger or Prager? Elliot Prager from the ride said, it isn't even necessary to get legislation because ride doesn't require you to bus, you know, they make a reasonable plan for the number of seats needed, not that you have to bus, not that you have to pay for every seat. We currently have some buses arriving at the high school at 7:02, 7:03, and the kids can't even get in the building until 7:11, so they have to sit on the bus in the parking lots. That's because we plan for 100% participation of those kids driving, you know, taking the buses, and then half the stops aren't required, so they get there early. That's what we were told when we, when we met with them. So I think, I would like to at least explore, since ride has said it's not something that we're prohibiting, I think we should be doing something like this. I think we should be, you know, sending out some type of informational or disclaimer to the parents, you know, particularly the high school parents, if, you know, will your student be availing themselves of services, you know, 90%, or less than 10% at the time during the year? And if somebody says, my kid is, you know, signs, if I sign off saying he's going to ride the bus once in a while, but not, you know, not 100% of the time, you don't necessarily need to leave seats for 100 kids, if, you know, if that's what you have on that, on that run, you could leave seats for, you know, a little comfort zone, like 70 kids plus an extra 10 in case the kids fall breakdown or something. But I think what Cumberland, Cumberland seems to think, and when I read the article, I agree with every word in the article, that it's kind of crazy that we're, you know, renting buses and doing routes based on 100% participation when you do see the buses go by hours, and the high school buses in particular are half-empty. So I think this is something I would like, if we're going to do this internally this year with Mr. Mayo and the Daco people, then I at least want them to, I would like to consider polling the parents and sending out some type of form for them so that we could get a better handle on how many kids are actually going to be riding the bus, and leave ourselves some type of buffer. I'm not saying if you get back, you know, 70 statements saying my kids aren't riding the buses, well, you know, you still might want to leave 10 extra seats.
Let me help you out there, we did that four years ago, and it actually helped a little bit. We haven't done it every year, and the reality is, and I think we can easily do it again, however, you can't take it to the bank. In other words, you get what you get, but at any point during the year, Mike, if they're within the bus-able mileage area, and they pick up the phone and say, my child's not riding the bus, then we're going to have to add the stop or redo the route, I think it's a worthy task. We did it four years ago, and we got a better feel for the number of high school students that would be riding. We still have geographical miles to cover, remember, so, so we can do it again.
I vote for the diversity, I don't have to recuse myself, I was involved in this with the state, I vote for implementing this path, I think.
Do you want, and then the action number, could you, you know?
Well, I'd like to make a motion to request this, the transportation, Mr. Mayo and the transportation, whoever the superintendent feels is the appropriate personnel member to do something about surveying parents and getting a better handle on the number of, particularly, high school students who will actually be riding the buses.
I will, you can vote, but I'll tell you right now, I'll be glad to ask Mr. Mayo, Jane Pepo, to work with Tim McGee, so they can put something together to get, to get out the parents via school messenger and see what we get for response.
Do you feel that we need to vote? Are we good with that?
I'm fine, if that's what's going to happen.
All right, thank you very much.
If I may, we'll get, then we'll have, we'll have some feedback at that point, too, so that'll maybe be people, having the feedback will give us some idea of what to do next. You know, if I may suggest, too, the statute just passed, we get popular for the next meeting, just to have it popular.
You know, could you, could you have Mr. Mayo, would you get the cost analysis that Jim, that I was referring to for eliminating a bus? Would you get that from Mr. Mayo tomorrow and email it to us, please?
I don't know that I can commit to tomorrow, but I will get it when I can to get it to all of you, how's that?
Well, within two days? I don't want to give you a three weeks to make one up, if we've got it done, let's see it now.
I don't want to insult Mr. Mayo with that three-week comment, like, it's just that I don't happen to be in tomorrow, and I've got something going on Friday, so I will get it to you all as soon as possible. Okay? And candidly, I think the idea of having another company do what you're talking about has a lot of merit, it's a matter of timing. It's like, it's now, so anyways.
Okay, it is 9:38, is there anything on the agenda that I should especially be mindful of in the event that we run beyond 10 o'clock?
Actually, we can pass everything.
Number six.
Number six.
Number six, you've got to do.
Number six.
Number six, you have to.
Okay, let's do number six, and Mr. Conell is right, number four, but it is Mrs. Gillette, she's not here, so we can close that off. So number six...
Number four, I would just table the next meeting, let, let the administration come back with a recommendation on the matter.
Yeah, we're not going to discuss it.
That's okay.
Mrs. Gillette's not here. Number six, leave of absence request from Mrs. Menosch.
Make a motion, we move that up on the calendar?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, okay. I think the information's pretty straightforward, did you want to say anything, Mr. Lombardi?
It's your prerogative, unless you ask me for my recommendation, I don't want to step on your toes, if you ask me, I'll give you one.
What is your recommendation?
I recommend that you do not approve the general leave request.
Do not?
Right.
Can you, is there something you can share publicly with us, or is this under personnel or something?
Um, I, yeah, I don't want to, I can simply say it's a general request, Mike, and in the 11 years or so, 12, general requests will leave, they're not connected to a medical request or something, just, they're just kind of out there. So basically, you end up holding a spot potentially for a person, finding a teacher for one year only, and candidly, I don't think that's best for the, for the school district. So beyond that, I can't comment, so.
Would someone like to make a motion with regard to this request?
By contract, do they have to give a reason why they're asking for the request?
There are, there are leave requests that have come in front of you or that have come to me with specific reasons why, and in those cases, either I have the prerogative or they come to you with my recommendation with the reasons why. This is a general leave, no specific purpose, we don't know. So that's all I can really comment.
So as I'm reading the general leave language, it doesn't say they have to give us a reason for why they're asking for the leave?
I didn't say it did, Mike, I said it...
No, I'm just remembering, I want to make sure I'm understanding it, that's what I'm going to do.
I remember one other general leave, and candidly, when it did happen many years ago, the person went and fought somewhere else for a year, didn't come back, and we ended up in the old contract, having to hold that position for one year, bill it with a one-year teacher. I just don't think it's best for kids.
Would any questions or...
I just wanted to... I'd like a legal opinion on this, and what, I mean, that would just be what I would want, but if anybody wants to make a motion...
Do we need to make a decision?
Do we need to do this tonight, Steve? If Jim would like to get a legal opinion from Ben?
Sure, you don't have to ask him tonight, I won't think.
Can we adjourn on the 30th? We have a meeting on the 30th, can we adjourn on the 30th?
Absolutely.
A motion to continue that, this...
Well, that would have, we would have to ask Ben to do a ruling for the 30th.
Well, I think he can just give us pretty quick answers.
Okay, so do you want to make a motion to have Ben?
A motion to continue to the 30th, if we don't have a legal...
As been for legal?
I don't know if it's illegal to ask the person why, but if there's a valid reason for her request, but she didn't state it because it doesn't say in the contract to have to state it, you know, if somebody has a really good reason, I'd like to give a leave. I mean, she's got a, an elderly parent that she has to...
I can't speak to it, Mike, the request came as a general leave, I can't say any more than that.
Well, can you just ask Ben if there's a way that we could ask that question, or require that information without violating my rights?
So following the motion, can you authorize Ben to, if it's appropriate to speak to this person, see if it gets more, if the board, you know, president or whoever's representative?
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. I would like to address item number seven. It is a request from the town to pay for signage.
General, I have nothing to interrupt you. I have the information I have.
Great.
Okay. So I was at the town council meeting last night, and this issue came up, and the school committee paying, I'm sorry, yeah, school committee paying came up, but Mr. Pentagast interjected and said that his men could put the signs in, and that the state could print the signs for free. So I don't think that there would be any cost to the school committee. I don't think. I mean, that was my impression.
Do we need to do anything on that?
So I would, I would concur. I watched the video at lunch today. And you did a nice job speaking, by the way. Well, because, because there were a couple other things that I was interested in, but couldn't make the meeting. So the way that I read the comments that they made was that even if we went down the road of pursuing this and paying for it ourselves, we probably couldn't beat the state. The state can do it in November.
Right.
They're willing to print now, and just hand them to us for us to do. And so the town council would be paying our own department, or public works, workers, either overtime or adjusting schedules to fill that in. So I personally think there's no issue here for us to pay more. I don't think you...
How much money do we have to spend?
The total, the total is usually ten grand.
So we don't need, we don't need to address this tonight?
Remove, continue indefinitely?
I would need it to go to the agenda. Yeah. Remove, continue indefinitely. Second.
Any discussions? Gentlemen, Mr. Lombardi made a move to continue this indefinitely, nor indefinitely.
I'm gonna move that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, so moved. Okay, that brings us back to item, we have two items left on the agenda. I think number five would be pretty quick, if Mr. Connel would like to speak about, if you're all okay with that, and then we'll go to number three.
Uh, I think, well, I spoke, I had just, the superintendent said this morning, I think, maybe it's actually, I think the conclusion is that maybe premature before us right now. Correct, Steve? It's going forward at the, at the, for this...
Yeah, I don't know, I think Mr. McGee's gone, but I...
It's a podium, by the way.
He has a screening team, I don't know, I don't know how many...
We're accepting applications up until tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Okay, last second on the agenda, is high school graduation requirements policy and elective work offerings, Mr. Clifford?
Well, I, you know, I won't even get into this tonight, because it was actually Mrs. Gillette that wanted to discuss the failure rates, and we initially got them with, when we were having the discussion of the graduation requirements, and she, I think, asked to have it put back on as the discussion of the failure rates. So I'll be willing to hold off until the end here to have that whole discussion.
Well, we should do a disambiguation of that, and talk about the actual, what is really the best...
Yeah, and if I could just make one more impression, Mr. McGee, when you, when you do bring this back, I don't need you to go into it tonight, I think we're all, you know, okay with that. But as I look through this in the packet, the thing that stuck out to me is, I'm not sure, and maybe I missed it, but I didn't see anything that told me kind of, like calculus is, is clearly, not calculus, algebra, clearly, right? That's a, that's a tough course for all students, or seems to be. I don't know if there's a threshold for certain curriculums, for, you know, for history, for reading, that you see a failure rate, and it triggers a review, or that would be helpful for us to know, so that we're not calling things up needlessly. So just to, that was my takeaway.
Yeah, I think we need any explanation.
And maybe that's in there, so I just wanted to mention that. That was the part that I, I seemingly couldn't piece together on my...
And, uh, Mr. McGee, just one more assignment. One thing I learned in the superintendent's search, and I guess I'm stealing other people's ideas, but was the, was the possibility of having, using technology, and having like one teacher oversee maybe five different classes, or five different programs? And so, for example, one person may be on computer programming, and they, they do it through technology, and maybe watch shows, or watch programs to learn how to do different things. Then you would have another teacher, I mean, you have another student doing something different. Have you, have you looked into that, or have, you know, is there, is there something that we can do going down the road to increase our electives in that manner? So I'm not putting you on the spot, I mean, in the future.
Yeah. We could, we could discuss all the, Mr. Pentagast, I am low, but if we did, yeah, or whatever, if we did, if they're not, if they're not...
Sounds good.[1629.63]